Good afternoon. Good morning, sir. Thank you for your attention. We have ordinances on second reading. We have ordinance 071403 is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Schedule 29, Parking Zones for Handicap. Dividing one handicap parking zone, one-on-one right place, and add one handicap parking zone and one-on-one chess observal. Ordinance 7145 is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Schedule 29, Stopping or Standing prohibited during certain hours, and this is in reference to Wall Street. We have ordinance 071406 is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Schedule 29, Parking Time Limit on Certain Streets, this is in reference to Rockers Saturday Home Football Games Parking. Orders on first reading. Ordinance 01401 is an ordinance who will authorize that precision by eminent authority of a portion of block 341, Lot 72, Point 01, 67 West and Ward Avenue. Ordinance 081402 is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Schedule 8-8 of these zones, and this is in reference to Hampton Street. Resolutions. We have resolution 401, approved agenda amendments. Resolution 402, approved tables, 7512, 71814, and 71914 to 8114. Resolution 403, authorized review of illegal tax sales certificates. Resolution 404, approved amendment of resolution 05418, the reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $612 to Benedict Alman for the technical negligence in the matter of Oswaldo Hernandez, Jorge Lopez Nieves, Jose Granados Poya versus the City of New Brunswick, from $6,622 to $6,834. Resolution 405, approved amendment of resolution 061404, the reason is to pay legal fees in the amount of $1,093 to Martin Kane and Cooper for police detectives, Kenneth Horry, DeMarroso Hernandez, Lopez Nieves, Granados Poya versus the City of New Brunswick, from $9,978 cents to $11,063. Resolution 406, approved amendment of resolution 071404, the reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $1,164.50 to Witsner and Witsner for police officer Andy Wise in the matter of Rodriguez versus police officer Andy Wise, from $4,063.50 to $5,202. Resolution 407, approved amendment of resolution 051463, and the reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $637.50 to Witsner and Witsner for police officer Brad Birdell in the matter of below, police officer Brad Birdell, from $14,912 to $15,549.50. Resolution 408, approved request for use of city property. The location is the street corner parking, 4955 of Irish Street. This is requested by both Plaustine, by Plaustine and the student chapter of the New Jersey American Society of Landscape Art Institute. Four, as part of the International Parking Day, 2014, a parklet to provide the community a place to eat, drink, play, rest, and socialize. This is going to be held on Friday, September 19, 2014, with a rain date of Friday, October 3, 2014, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Resolution 409, approved request for use of city property requested by Second World Fine Watch, Jerry Smith. The location, recreation park for National Networked Town and Straddle Grill, that was called Two Seashore Fifth, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. This is non-trimble. Resolution 410, approved authorization to advertise for 2014 permanent delivery of regular designs. This is non-trimble. Resolution 411, approved request for use of city property requested by Warner Working. The location is Monument Square Park for a candidate to issue to Invisaborgers about domestic violence on Thursday, October 9, 2014, with a rain date of Thursday, October 16, 2014, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Resolution 412, approved offer of this raffle merchandise at 90 Church Street, Stretch Factory, for Christina Walsh Breast Cancer Foundation, on October 19, 2014. Resolution 413, approved amendment of resolution 061464, the reason is to add one food truck and three color drums and artists in Monument Square Park. Approved request for street closing and use of city property requested by the Bronx Cultural Center. The location is Monument Square Park. The school location is Cleveland Avenue, between York Financial and Hilton Hotel for the second annual Central Jersey Jazz Festival, on Saturday, September 13, 2014, from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Resolution 414, approved request for use of city property, sidewalks only, requested by Boya, galvanizing and organizing youth activism and rockers. The location is Google Park and sidewalks only for the 13th Annual World Freedom Series, on Saturday, October 11, 2014. The time of the park will be from 12:00 p.m. to 12:30 p.m. Resolution 415, approved purchase by Law Department under state contract 8-77560 for software license and related service, Von Scheid International for software license, not to exceed $332.61. Resolution 416, approved authorization to rebid requested by the Police Department for translation services for the Police Department. Resolution 417, approved work contract, R.C.N., for maintenance and support contract for proprietary software for G.I.S. Development Software Application for the Division of Assessment. The term is 12 months, starting on September 18, 2014, and ending on September 17, 2015, not to exceed $9,000. Resolution 418, authorized purchase by Police Department under state contract 8-883911 for Microstratist Inc. for nine police recording system, not to exceed $34,090. Resolution 419, approved amendment of resolution 021437, the reason is additional amount of $3,000 for tack coating to repair cut holes. This is for track rock industry, where we can deliver continuing materials not to exceed $3,000. Approval of this amendment will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. Resolution 420, approved amendment of resolution 011476, reason additional amount of $3,000 for paracross translation Inc., with paracross translations Inc. This is for interpreters for the municipal court, not to exceed $3,000. Resolution 421, approved amendment of resolution 051421, the reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $935 to Lawrence Peterman for Sergeant Anthony Tercinski in the matter of Oswaldo Hernandez, Jorge Lopez Nieves, and Jose Granados Poya versus the City of New Brunswick, from $2,235.50 to $3,170.50. Resolution 422, approved resolution authorizing free accreditation with the New Jersey State Association of Ships of Police for accreditation for the Police Department, the term is three years, not to exceed $6,000. Resolution 423, approved amendment of resolution 071460, the reason is electrical work in the private school at Firehead Course in the amount of $1,268.65 for electrical maintenance[587.48]
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes, we have ordinances on second reading. So we have ordinance 071-403, which is an ordinance one and a supplemental revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Chapter 10 vehicles and traffic, Schedule 29, parking zones for handicap persons. We are giving one handicap parking zone at 101 Bright Place and we are adding one handicap parking zone at 101 Chester Stone. Does anybody in the public wishes to address the council on these specific ordinance? Having done, I'm ready to take motion.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes. Ordinance 071-405, it's an ordinance one and a supplemental revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, vehicles and traffic, Schedule 28, stopping or standing prohibited during certain hours. This is in reference to Wall Street. Have you seen any member of the public wishes to address the council on this specific ordinance? Having done, move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. Ordinance 071-406, it's an ordinance one and a supplemental revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, vehicles and traffic, Schedule 29, parking time limit on certain streets. This is in reference to Rockford Center, home football games parking. Does anybody in the public wishes to address the council on this specific name and address?
Good evening, this is Council Charles Cradaville from New Brunswick. I'm asking first, just how is this gonna work? So we're gonna charge people $10, or is it $10 for 24 hours of parking?
Yes.
And so surely the meters are not equipped to handle $10 or 24 hours of parking? How would this logistically work?
Sir, I don't know.
No, I know, I definitely need to help Mr. Mitchum. By course, we have an extra.
Possibly.
Yes, sir.
Possibly Antoine?
Yes, sir. If you could come on, please, to the microphone, say your name and address.
I'm Mr. Antoine Johnson, Department of Parking. The meters that we're gonna be doing the $10 charge on are IPS meters. They are equipped for credit cards and parking. They can take anything you program for.
Thank you.
And I assume there'll be appropriate signage to let people know that this is a deal, you get 24 hours and it's $10?
Absolutely.
Yes, it will be.
Okay, and I wanted to ask, did the parking authority use any consultants to come up with this plan?
I have no knowledge, Mr. Johnson, do you have any knowledge?
No, I don't really have too much knowledge of the consultant. He did you in front of the ex, that was good.
Mr. K.
Thank you.
I guess, I guess what I'm getting at, I'm just getting at, is this the best way to handle this problem? I mean, or it's not even a really problem, it's an opportunity, right? So how, what, I just don't get it.
What is that you don't get, Mr. Cradaville? So I'm going to try to look here.
Is, what is, well, I guess what is the motivation of why? Is it to make the most money or is it? I mean, giving up a parking spot for 24 hours at a time seems, seems odd, right?
Well, this is on Saturday when the, you know, with the Big Ten, we don't expect a lot of people visiting New Brunswick. So it's just for those Saturdays that they have home wins. So I don't think, I think they said advantage was, we know that, because we are expecting a lot of people.
Right, I mean, and so what was the deal before? It was just free parking on College Avenue, right?
Well, yes, yeah, well, especially given we're not part of the Big Ten, so.
I believe there was no parking there before this. And so now, in anticipation of crowds, we're gonna put our parking in the city of New Brunswick.
Yes.
So I just want to be clear, you're currently on a Saturday, if there's a home football, you're not allowed to park on College Avenue?
On that area, as Mr. Hamilton just stated, he believes that there's no parking.
Oh, I'm sorry, East, Easton Avenue.
There's no parking on that area, that is, is that correct, Mr. Johnson?
No, I think it's Easton Avenue that there's no parking, the game days.
Okay, and so this would affect Easton College or both?
Mr. Hamilton.
This ordinance affects only College Avenue.
Yeah.
Okay, and so, one more time, currently you can park on College Avenue on a Saturday, a couple of Saturdays?
He just said that, he just said that that's, it's not in that area, there's no parking in that area right now, it's College Avenue.
Okay, what is the area? Is it the full length of College Avenue?
166 feet west of the westerly superb line of College Avenue.
So is it for the duration of College Avenue? For every block of College Avenue? College Avenue is about six or seven blocks?
These, we don't have the start, we have the measures, you know, where, where does it start? Well, the, the bulk of this ordinance, Mr. Cradaville, it's just, like I said, it's just to give it the parking time, just to give it, like you said, there's gonna be a lot of expected attendance, riskiness, and we wanted to appropriate, accumulate those resources. Right, we could make revenue out of that, that's, that's what we intended. At this point, I don't, in this area, I don't believe there's meters or the meters are gonna be changed, but it's just a specific day that, you know, that, that day that the rates will be replaced.
Okay, well, yeah, respectfully, respectfully, I think we agree about most of this. I just, I think it's not been made clear which area we're talking about. And so if, if we don't know, we still have a month before the first home game. So I would humbly ask that you just table this ordinance and make the parking authority answer this question.
I think we have the areas, we don't have the whole, if, from what, we have from where it starts to where, yes, right, Mr. Hamilton? The ordinance, I think, specifies it, it's just that.
Mine is not in my packet, so I can't tell you. It's, is your?
I'm checking right now. So Saturday, we have.
Nothing, we should probably see considering the fact that it says, it says the same thing in the order that you have. Beginning at 4165 B1, we have three per.
So.
And you have your.
I, I actually have, it says Somerset to Lafayette Street. So I should, I should've just looked at that. And so I guess.
So let me, let me look at, okay, we have, we have, yeah. Let me, let me just give you the information that the ordinance has. And it's, that we're referring to, so that way we are in the same, everybody's in the same page. Make sure that we say we're in. So we need to avoid, and if there's still some questions, we can put it on, until we have. It says it's Forest Avenue and the location, the size, all size. And then between, I guess the location is Somerset Street to Lafayette Street. And it would be only on Saturdays when there's a home game. And it would be from 12:00 AM to 11:59 AM, anyway. So, yes, we have the location, it's Somerset to Lafayette.
Thank you, that answers all my questions. I would just hesitate a little bit to move forward something we're not clear about. I think perhaps there could be a better way to do this and perhaps we'll learn a better way as we move forward. So that's all I have, thank you.
Good to go, thank you, Mr. Cradaville. Anybody else in the public wishes to address the council on these specific ordinance? Have you noticed?
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. We have ordinances on first reading, ordinance 081-401, which is an ordinance to authorize acquisition by eminent command of proportion of law, 341 lot 72.01, 67 West End Ward Avenue. Move the ordinance setting down August 20th for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes, we have ordinance 081-402, which is an ordinance one and a supplemental revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, vehicles and traffic, Schedule 8-A, loading zones, and this is in reference to pound. Move the ordinance setting down August 20th for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes, we have Resolutions 401 to Resolution 449. At this time, any member of the public who has any questions regarding Resolution 401 to Resolution 449, please come forward, state your name and address. And you have my minutes to address your questions.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradaville of New Brunswick. Thank you for the honor and pleasure of addressing me tonight. The first item is 081407, the payment to Mitchner and Midster for the defense of Police Officer Brad Burdell. I would urge the council not to approve this. Officer Burdell killed a man in cold blood, he is no longer on the force. The independent hearing officer the city has hired has found him to be an evasive witness and his testimony was troubling and potentially in conflict with dispatch records. This is the city's words, the word of the independent hearing officer. I do not, I'm not comfortable with my money, with taxpayer money, with the city's money going to pay for this man's attorney anymore. And I would ask, please, will you do this for me, not, will you vote against 081407 tonight?
Anything else, Mr. Cradaville?
I'd like to answer my question, will you, will you stand up?
There is a question, you made a statement, so we have to pay our bills. And that's a bill that we need to be responsible for. We have, they can just simply pay our bills.
I, I just don't understand why we, why we still have to pay this man's bills. He's been, he's resigned to disgrace. I, I don't, I don't think it's right. I think you should take a stand against it. Even if the vote is only four to one, I'm gonna ask you to please vote against it, I'm the council president. This is not right. I'm not comfortable with this and you shouldn't be either.
Anything else, Mr. Cradaville?
Yes. Number 16, translation services for the police department. What exactly are the services and why are they being reviewed?
Captain Mayor, usually, these are the services, we usually see these every year, you can notice that these are for translation services for our even that that's where the contract services come in, so I can provide the translator for the course. But if Captain Mayor, if that's, am I accurate, that this is the?
I don't have, I don't know if this is for the court, there's no clarification. There's translations?
Is this separate, is it for the court? There's only one for the court, so you know, that's why, so.
It'd be a translation for dispatch, then.
For the dispatch, okay, so these for the police department dispatch.
So do we currently have someone doing that service?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and why is it being reviewed?
There is some for the.
May I answer that? No proposals were received to the advertisement specification number 38L-14, or RFP-1L.
Yeah, and I, and I don't think it's, usually when they do it, you recall, you know, there are times, it's usually the same case, that at the beginning they don't get anybody's one and then later on, so like, once it's reviewed, it's, it's very responsible.
That's right, thank you for the thorough answer. Number 18, police department purchasing $34,000 recording system. What is that recording system and how will it be used?
Not for dispatch. Dispatch? Yes.
So this is to record the communications over the radio?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Number 22, the police being reaccredited for three years, costing $6,000.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed $6,000. I guess my question is, what does it take to achieve the accreditation of the NJ State Association of Chiefs of Police?
Yeah, they achieved it, I guess, three years ago. And it was a lot of paperwork, practically, I didn't see it, but I'm sure that if you wanted to see the police do it, you could see it.
I know it's a very exhaustive investigation that they took, because I remember when they first applied for it and it involves, you know, looking at the overall process and the process of the department, yes, Captain?
There's 111 standards that the department has to meet. And, you know, they reevaluate receivers to meet the standards, that's for instance. Okay, and so I presume this is an application to apply, apply for reaccreditation, right?
They, I don't offer an application.
Okay, the reason I ask, I just wanna know, when would the decision be made if we're reaccrediting or not our police department?
I believe this one, the program one expires soon, that's why they were doing this, because I think it's the first three years ago. So there will be, yeah, public knows when they start.
Any idea what time of year this will, this will be coming out?
Exactly, no, we don't, but we will make sure that we follow on moving forward, it's private.
Thank you kindly. And the last few deal with the water system. 42 is the retention of a firm to find a new water director. And what can you tell me about this firm that we're hiring?
Mr. Lafferty, I consider that he's the same firm that we used to hire, he's the right direction. I'd like to tell you, like, Mr. Lafferty, you look a little summary of the firm that we use.
Well, the, we use the services of one particular gentleman, his name is George Shackleton. He resides at One Spring Street. It is true that we used him in the executive search that led to Frank Marash's hire and then, secondly, Keith Smith's hire. I believe he has done some work for the, the parking authority. And we think that he'll be successful in the endeavor we're asking him to take on.
Thank you for that. How does this compare to the previous agreement with this firm, with the tires, crack, rushing?
It's roughly $7,000 larger fee.
Okay, and what is that?
His fee is a function of what we think the salary will be to the candidate that he is recruiting. And he's apparently also given us a number of discounts. He's discounted the fee down significantly, but it is $7,000 greater than the other contract.
Okay, and the timeline for when we might be, you know, bringing on a new person as the water director?
You're asking me no sooner or later. As, if we see her, the candidate tomorrow, it will be here tomorrow if we start. So we are doing everything in our, working very hard to make that decision happen soon.
Understood.
And the water pumps, number 43, the upgrades are being put out to bid. When can we expect construction to start and construction to be complete on that project?
I really, I really can't answer that. The, the bids will probably come back within 60 days, something this technical, you don't want to shorten the response time, but I'm sure we're not even opening bids for 60 days. Assuming the bid process goes well, another 60 days thereafter, maybe, maybe longer.
Another 60 days to complete the work?
To, to issue the proceed to work order.
To start.
Bonds have to be looked at, the bid has to be analyzed, as, as has been the case recently, not every bid goes very easily with some folks maybe being rejected. But it's a large project, it's worth, the engineering estimate's 4.7 million, so I think it'll be, we will have many bids to review.
Okay, I'm sure.
I'm pretty sure, Mr. Cradaville, that once the fees, they look at the fees and everything is, and once given the opportunity, it will have a timeline there and we'll make sure that, we will pass around, and once, the specific factors anyways.
And is, is, is there a ballpark figure on how long it would take to do the project? Like a year or a half a year?
Mr. Newton, have you any idea?
I don't, I would say it's much longer than a half a year though.
Okay.
I can get that information.
Thank you. And then the final question is on 46, Hatchmont McDonald, miscellaneous supplemental engineering services. What are these additional engineering services and do they have to do with the problems that the water treatment might?
Mr. Baldwin? Hatchmont McDonald? Number 40?
No, we utilize Hatchmont McDonald for traffic engineering studies, for AutoCAD work, to do our own in-house design projects. They, they prepare the drawings for us in the AutoCAD and those types of services.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville. If there's anything, if you could, if I could put anything else, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Let me get this correct. For resolution ending in 1407, you're saying you have to pay this?
We have to pay our bills, the city bills, this is something that they do and we have to pay the bills.
So why are you voting on it if you have to pay it?
Because we have to, of course, that it has to, something that it was done.
Let me, let me get this correct.
It was done, it was a service and it was provided already.
Okay, but you're voting on it, right? But you're stating that you have to pay it.
That we have to pay for the services that have been provided already, it's part of our responsibility.
So it's already decided?
No, the, the services have taken place already, so we have to pay our bills.
You have an opportunity to either pay it or not pay it, right? Vote on it or against it, because it's all resolutions.
You have it, you have the option to vote whether it is or not, that's an individual decision, but you've got to pay the bills then, the city has outstanding, so it's more, that's more of a.
So do you get what I'm saying?
I hear what you're saying, I'm telling you that.
So don't, don't give a play on words, saying that you have to pay.
I am not playing with words, Mr. Pittman.
Yes, you are.
You are not.
You're telling me you have to pay your bills.
Yes. What is your question, Mr. Pittman? What is your statement? Thank you.
Wait, listen, listen to me, listen to me.
I, I listen.
You're saying, I have, see, little things, little small things I listen to. You're saying, I have to, we have to pay our bills?
Yes.
But you're voting on this, so you don't have to pay this, right?
Yes. The state law, as well as the contract of the PBA, requires that we, under certain circumstances, have to pay this, and this is one of those circumstances.
So voting on this point, you have to pay it anyway, right?
But we still have to vote, I think, to authorize the people to finance and send out a check.
My name is, uh, 15 years old, I was born here and I watched 21st, 1960, right here in 1955. And from what I learned, the constitutional says that I'm a U.S. citizen.
Do you have, I'm sorry to interrupt you, do you have a question about any other resolution?
Yes, I got a question on y'all paying bills.
Okay.
Okay. This was a, this had happened here with O'Brien.
What's the resolution number that you refer to?
No, I'm just, I'm just addressing something that I'm paying, that I never applied for, because y'all do that same thing. I'm just, I got two bills.
And I understand, I just wanted, just to, because we could go and listen to you in a second, I just wanna say that at this point.
I just heard you said that, and.
No, I understand.
I'm a victim of that.
I, I, and I want you to, to give us your input. What I'm asking is, is it related to any of the resolutions that we had right here?
Well, it's related to, you're saying that you had to pay a bill.
And, and I understand.
Right, which I paid the bill.
He was, yeah, he was referring to a specific resolution that he was talking about.
Okay, well, I would.
So that's what I mean, that, thank you, thank you.
Tori Shabazz, Somerset, New Jersey. I just wanted to get the law that you quoted, Mr. Hamilton, about having to pay attorney fees for police officers?
So 3155, something like that, considering after the meeting, I'll pull the budget, it'll be nothing specifically, say.
And I also agree with Charlie, Charlie Cradaville and Tramell, that if you don't have to pay it, you shouldn't. And I think Tramell's point was, why vote if it's something you have to do? Because if someone says no, if the majority votes no, the bill doesn't get paid. But if it's a law, then there's no sense in voting on it, because you have to pay it, it doesn't make sense.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wishes to address the council on any of the existing resolutions that we read? Resolution 4, oh, one to Resolution 449? Move the other notions.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes, before we go into the public portion part of the meeting, I was trying to, as fast as I can, to give an update on some of the things that have been brought forth. In terms of the water department, I just wanna give a brief update of what has been done so far. We still, the water department, as you read today, so today, we just have to matter consulting management firm to now would say for a water director. So hopefully that will be, we'll be able to identify somebody soon and have that signature up. Of today, the transition with American Water has been pretty seamless. Our workers, employees at the water department and the representative of work, of American Water have been working together, have been helping each other, fostering good relationship and giving each other feedback on how the process is going and is nothing but positive so far. And in terms of the MOU that we talked about at the last meeting, they, they continue to have talks, negotiations with American Water. So hopefully we will have something, they have to submit one, in August 20th, they need to submit a proposed MOU because some vacation schedules were in conflict and probably we will have a proposed agreement by September, by the September 30th meeting of the council. So, so far, we are moving forward and from what I hear and will think that I received, the business of my knowledge has been done in a very seamless, positive way.
Tori Shabazz, Somerset, New Jersey. First, I wanna provide Ms. Escobar with the 25 page, did you get it? Okay, I was also told to give it to you there at the meeting, so I'm here. Sure you know what it's about and it's about the internal affairs, you know, hearing process, so I'm gonna to pass this up.
And thank you, I, I received it yesterday, I read it last night.
Okay.
And that's why I know that it's 25 pages, as I'm working, so I'll, I just read it, I have not shared it yet with my council because I didn't have time to make copies for everybody. But I'm just, so you know, I'll definitely share the recommendations and, and that he hears and I will, as fast as I can to address this, I will try my best to have it done soon. But just so you know that I received it and I have.
So you don't want this copy?
No, give it to me, of course, actually, yeah, so that way I just make copies from that, right?
Thank you. And also, in addition to that, I just wanna come back from the last meeting and see if I can get a status update on everything that happened with the whole internal affairs process and the concerns that we expressed. I'm sure we're gonna revisit it due to this 25-page report. But I don't know if you went back and watched the video like I asked you to. But one of, one of my concerns about Ms. Gannon being in the position that she's in, to me, was proven that day. She was quick to reprimand me for interrupting her when she spoke and I didn't respond, because I was wrong. I shouldn't have spoken when she spoke. But then, when I'm speaking to you and I stated that internal affairs was negligent, to me, that was a true statement. Now, whether they intentionally didn't interview the witnesses or, or not, if it was an accident, they were still negligent. But the fact that Ms. Gannon could not compose herself and made the statement with some gestures, body gestures, that's what you want us to say. The key word that she used was us. She was supposed to be presenting herself as a community liaison, but to say us, she tied herself into with internal affairs, which is her position as the city attorney. And it just proves that she can't be fair and impartial. She got so upset of the mere thought. She got so upset of the mere thought of having to admit what the facts show. They didn't interview the witnesses. Why did she get so upset? Why did she have to leave the meeting? She has to be removed. She does, she has, there's a conflict. She has the city's best interest at heart solely. Nobody else responded the way she did. You know, and it wasn't just, and it wasn't her turn to speak, but she was out of control. Oh, that's what you want us to say? No, I don't want her to say anything because she was supposed to be acting as a community liaison, which supports our complaints from when Mayor Cahill implemented her and Mr. Hoffman into those positions, that it was a clear conflict. And everything that's going on proves it. And we're tired of coming here and doing what we're doing now, and we're not getting any results. I want to know what has happened in the past three weeks with the information that you had from the last meeting. Mr. McDougal still and keep can't be here this evening because he's not well, and my husband couldn't be here either. But Mr. McDougal has not heard from anyone in three weeks, not the council, Ms. Gannon, or Mr. Hoffman. And Ms., and Ms. Gannon stated that the internal affairs investigation was reopened. He did make the recommendation. She stated that. But Mr. McDougal doesn't have that, that information. That's not what Mr. Hoffman reported to him. So if it, if it's done the way she said and the way she wanted the council to believe, why hasn't internal affairs contacted Mr. McDougal? And I think that you had three weeks, you know, you shouldn't really look into this because it's serious. When I come here, I want to know what's going on, what progress are we making? We've been patient with you when you ask, you know, we got to work this out. This is new. And, and we need results now. We need the council to make, you know, the moves that they need to make, to put the right people in, to get justice. And I'm not saying that means the people have to be right all the time and the police have to be wrong, but the person has to be impartial. You understand what I'm saying? And you have the power to make that happen, and you're not giving it to us, and we're getting frustrated. So I'm going to come every council meeting because I'm going to want a status update. I'm going to want to know what's going on. And I'm going to want you to really look at those tapes and, and just from her reaction and everything that's transpired in that twenty-five page report, you'll see that she has a conflict and she needs to be removed. It's not even a recommendation. It's a must. It has to be done.
Thank you, and, and I hear what you're saying, and we have been in the talks and looking at, and that's why I wanted to share our way. I just got it last night, like I said, and I couldn't share it with my council, fellow council members. But that is something that I want to share, and so we could look at the process and see up to now. There were some things that concerned me, I'll be honest. So, so, and I expressed that, that concern as spoke to Mr. Hamilton. So we're working, we're working on it. So I thank you for, for being here and keep coming and asking for a follow-up, okay?
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Hamilton?
Ms. Gannon did send the...
I was going to say, because I was going to...
...to judge after final vote, I have not seen it yet.
Okay, because I was going to talk yesterday that you were going to follow on that of Mr. McDonald's case also. Thank you.
Good evening. Phyllis Deo, I'm from Hightstown, but I work here in the Brunswick. About a month ago, I was here and stated my concerns. I had given the council members a letter. And from my attorney's advice, I'm going to leave the situation as is. I will not win fighting City Hall, and since the film of my supposed violation does not show the act I'm accused of committing, and there's no identification of me or my car, New Brunswick has no proof to ticket me, unless that information was erased before I was given a copy of the film. I can only say that the setup and method of enriching New Brunswick is shameful and blatantly illegal. And if I had unlimited time and resources, I would fight this if for no reason other than to expose what New Brunswick is perpetrating. Use the money, take it from me falsely, in good health. But remember, what goes around comes around, and the falsehoods will catch up with the police department and the council. I just hope I'm here to see it or read about it and be able to say, good for you, right has finally gone.
I just, you know, thank you for being here. I know that Mr. Hamilton met with you and this council doesn't have a control over what you, somebody gets a ticket, kind of fix a ticket. But I respect what you just said, and, and, and like I said, we tried to give the information, I wish I could come to our, to Mr. Hamilton, but thank you for being here.
Hi, thank you. My name is Laura Petrie, one twenty-four Bayard Street. I'm also here on behalf of Food and Water Watch. Over the last several months, it's become abundantly clear that our water treatment system and processes need serious improvements to best protect public health and well-being. We thank the council today for moving forward with approval of an agreement on that will continue to search for a public water utility director. But we also think that the council and mayor must take action further to improve our utility operations procedures, strengthen in-house expertise, and work to ensure that we never experience these kinds of problems again. We call on the council and the mayor to hire an independent consultant to investigate the circumstances leading up to the loss of the city's qualified operators on the emergency contract with American Water, and to recommend necessary procedural, administrative, and policy changes to prevent such occurrences from arising again. To expeditiously hire a qualified water director and a licensed operator by offering more competitive compensation packages, develop and implement a plan with the new water director to bring the water system under full city operation by June thirtieth, twenty fifteen. We need the city council and mayor to share these plans with measurable benchmarks and provide monthly updates to the city on progress towards those benchmarks with full public transparency and ample opportunity for public input. Also, immediately install the necessary equipment and train city staff to operate in-house SCADA and other electronic monitoring program to eliminate the need for and the cost of the additional shift supervisors from American Water. Promote in-house expertise by providing training and incentives for existing city staff so that they may qualify for advanced licenses to provide training for necessary operator redundancies. Ensure that New Brunswick is able to exit out of any part of its contract with American Water as soon as the city has the staff in place to replace services provided by American Water, so that the city is not paying for services that are no longer necessary. And upon hiring a new city water director, hold a public forum on the state of the city's water system and city efforts to improve its in-house performance and offer public tours of the water system. Upon resuming full city operation of the water system, we'd like the council to explore public-to-public partnerships with water systems in the region to share the city's newfound expertise and bolster, bolster its buying power and achieve greater volumes and scale. And I know that Council President Escobar, you mentioned a few moments ago that earlier you said the transition with American Water has been seamless and very positive thus far. And I think that that's because you haven't entered into a full-blown contract with them yet, right? They haven't gotten their hooks in the city yet. But don't be fooled. On August fourth, the U.S. National Labor Relations Board says that American Water illegally cut employee benefits in two thousand eleven for three thousand two hundred workers in nearly seventy different bargaining units in fifteen states without having notified state mediation agencies about this ongoing dispute as required by federal labor laws. So I ask you, is this the kind of company that the New Brunswick City Council and Mayor want to do business with? Because this is the kind of company that you're doing business with right now. So we are urging you, on behalf of residents throughout the city, to please hire a public utility water director as soon as you can and break any contracts with American Water as soon as possible. It's in the best interest of city residents.
Thank you. I just want to say that I read a receipt from Mr. Walsh. All of us, what you just read is, is from a letter that we received from Mr. Walsh. And in that letter, I replied to him, and I know some of the other members replied, that we look into the regulations that he gives, and also that some of them we're already working on.
Okay.
Even before it was given, so, but thank you, and, and as I said before, we're looking, in fact, we're already by tomorrow, we will begin. I think that that's the same thing of all of us.
Okay.
So we are, and what I'm going to do is every, as much as I can, every, before the public portion of the meeting, I'm giving an update of what we are doing.
We just want to make sure that you're not being fooled by the niceties of American Water.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Danielle Moore. I live at two eleven Joyce Comer Avenue. That's a long drive. I'm standing close by. I'm here today to talk about the stream, the water and sewers on Joyce Comer Avenue, regards to the stream. I know you said maybe about three months ago that your best friend stays there on the corner?
She lives. That's her house.
Well, well, okay, wow.
It's just a home you have to live in.
Wow, I have to say, not no hard feelings, but wow, when it comes to something being done, I wouldn't want you to be my best friend to have, let my house continue flooding.
And I just to make it clear, it's not my best friend. It's somebody that I know since I was a kid.
Well, well, like I said, for so many years, we're coming with, with this stream here, where this water is getting all the way to Elizabeth Street. Please take a look. You're talking about Loretta, Charles, and Elizabeth Street. Well, what is the city going to respond to do? And he said that he was waiting on North Brunswick to respond with New Brunswick to fix the drain? For what? What are you waiting on North Brunswick for?
Mr. Walton, and, and I just want to be here with, you know, the person that you told you to, she called me, and we know that it...
Oh, I know she did. I was, I was standing right there with her. I was standing, I was standing with the daughter, excuse me. Yes, I was standing right there. She told me.
You spoke to her partner, and she called me from work, and she just, you know, she just wanted, I assure her that you have been very good from this, this council, talking about that situation that we don't recognize here, that it's something that, that is, it's a challenge. We don't, none of us wants to see that. And that, at the last, one of the few months ago, Mr. Walton, he explained that, so maybe what we could ask is a follow-up of our conversation because we are taking steps to regulate, regulate that situation, that we will take, let's say, yours not knowledge, because we recognize here that that's...
Okay, my question...
So you want to ask, Mr....
Yes, what are, what are the need of North Brunswick for Joyce Comer Avenue?
Second, Mr. Walton? If you could explain, and, and see, you said, update, because I know the owner of the house told me that you guys have been there to limit all the plans that have been happening in that area.
North Brunswick and New Brunswick go in the sanitary sewer, not the storm sewer. So they're in that area, but the storm sewer is a situation that we in the county are working on. In fact, we just had a progress meeting yesterday. We have to go to the DEP to get a permit. That application is going to go down there in the next week, and that should take another ninety days. We are going to go ahead with our own work in advance of the county's work, just to get, right now, the problem is in the culvert. The water line and sewer line go through the culvert. It catches debris, causes the culvert to back up and overflow. So we're going to get our pipes out of there even before the county replaces the culvert.
And I just want to add, like I said before, the owner of the house, I mean, Mr. Walton, if she acknowledged that they were here, you were telling them and asking her about the process and what's happening there.
Oh, oh, yes, she, like I said, I, I had a long talk with her. That's where my complaint, the complaint is, wow, after the water goes down, the city may send a street sweeper to come through there and clean the road. But just take a look at raw sewage left all over. You have a charter school there. What, the kids have to be evacuated? What with the sewer lines o-open? What are you to do afterwards? You never sent anyone to clean people's property, anything with the school? And while talking about water where what, sewage goes down to the stream and then that goes down to the Rabbitson River? So believe me, I think something needs to be done soon as possible for those kids go back to school. And here, you, you can, you can have the pictures to show, just like you said, where, how if you open up the ground like they did before, which I told you, they never removed the garbage underneath, that's why the water wasn't passing through. Wow, Livingston Avenue, Jersey Avenue, twenty-seven, all of them that were done, what? All of those passed through except Joyce Comer Avenue. So please, I hope you do do something soon. This is what, been five years? Each year getting worse and worse. Like I said, it used to be Charles Street and Joyce Comer. Now you're talking about Elizabeth, Charles, and, and Loretta? Oh, I think you need to do something soon, soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. And thank you for coming back. I just, so we're telling you that you wasn't a part of the media, so now to...
My name is David Williams, other than fifteen minutes ago. Four years ago, I came here, but you, Councilman Fleming, and the other guy are up near, so I would like to give you the benefit of the doubt to look at what I'm talking about, and then after next minute, I'll come back to address it.
Thank you.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick. I want to start by commending all the speakers so far. I very much agree with what they're all saying. I think that there's a lot of issues that need to be addressed in the city. I want to start by talking about the water deal and what went down at the last council meeting. I've been talking to a lot of people about it, working on an article about it, and my goodness, somebody really brought it home when they told me this. It's the exact opposite of how a democracy is supposed to work, how that water deal was implemented. In, in a democracy, there's supposed to be a problem that's identified, and public input is supposed to be a part of the process. Food and Water Watch should have been involved. People who were the customers of the water utility, the other towns should have been involved. And then, and only then, an agreement should have been put on the city council agenda, and the public should have been able to speak at that. And then the council could have maybe adopted it, and then, by law, the mayor would have the option to sign it and approve it. What happened was the exact opposite of what a democracy is supposed to be. The mayor signed the agreement behind all of our backs. And then, it went into effect, and you held a public hearing for it, but you didn't even hear from the public before you cast it. You actually passed it before hearing from the public. So it's the exact opposite of how it's supposed to work, so it's very concerning to me. I do want to say that it was great to be at National Night Out and to see some of you there last night. But we have a lot of public safety issues that I want to talk about. First and foremost, yesterday in this room, there was the Department of Transportation was here to address the project, the destruction project at eighteen and one where they meet. And I was shocked to find out that there are no sidewalks that are going to be a part of this project. They're not putting in sidewalks. How can we say we're protecting pedestrians when we're spending millions to build a highway and we're not even thinking of putting a place for pedestrians and for cyclists? Can you tell me why that is, is the case?
I'm not involved, I'm not involved in the project or the design, but I can tell you that they did consider sidewalks. The city actually asked them to consider sidewalks and a multi-use path to accommodate bikers. But in each case, those paths would have to cross three different ramp systems, which is a fatal equation to ask people to, on foot, cross on these ramps, and that's the DOT's protocol, not, not ours. But they were, they were asked to consider to add sidewalks and bike systems to the, to the project, and they said they could not.
You know, I came by, but it was in conflict with National Night Out. I thought that was insane, that you had a meeting in City Hall and you told people to come, and then there's no parking out back because there's a caravan of police vehicles. I thought it was absolutely...
The DOT was the one scheduled the meeting?
Yes, they asked for the use of the building on this evening, and we gave it to them.
I think, yeah, I think this needs to be looked at further. I think that if there's not going to be a sidewalk on the bridge they're building, you need some other way for people to get, you know, across that area, because people are going to try and people are going to get killed. And I know that there's not sidewalks leading up to it now, but there can be in the future. When, when we're building a big piece of infrastructure, we need to think long-term, and we need to put amenities for pedestrians, for people who don't have cars. New Brunswick has so many people who don't have cars and need to get around, and I just think it's an oversight, in my view.
Well, there's, you should, the Department of Transportation, they have a website that you could put comments on that in the project. I would suggest, I would do it too, just talk to them, and offer that as a, as a recommendation. Since you were not able to attend the meeting last night, that's a concern, as you suggested.
Sure, I will do that, and thank you for agreeing to do that as well. Another problem with public safety, I've noticed they're doing construction on Albany Street and also near Nelson Commercial, and there are just large piles of bricks left unattended. Is this, what, what construction company did we hire that thinks that that's appropriate to just leave large piles of loose bricks?
From what location is that, Mr. Taylor?
That would be all up and down Albany Street, near the J and J headquarters. I'm sure we see it. Is it the bike lane? Is that what they're doing?
It's the county bike way project. It's the county bikeway project.
So the county's the one responsible for the container area?
Yes, subcontractor.
So there's any way that we could address the county, let them know that there's bricks that might be posed as a risk for, I don't know, the car hits a brick, one of those bricks? I haven't noticed a sign before that.
The bricks are in the sidewalk area, I believe, but what would you like me to ask the county to do?
Well, to look at the safety aspects of having those bricks there, you know, if there's somebody passing by that takes one, or somebody, or anything that would minimize...
The bricks, okay, the bricks are being pulled up?
Or maybe the construction company can tie them off and cover them, so that there's not a kid that might grab it, or somebody that might have access to them. That would be my suggestion, buddy. Is that possible?
I believe that it's possible for me to ask the county, sure, of course.
Just to offer you...
I think the bricks are being pulled up because each intersection has to be, the handicap accessibility at each intersection has to be rebuilt.
But I guess maybe they have to, yeah, they're not gonna look also, because San Cas by there now, most of them, they can see me, there's a way that they could cover them, I'm sure that...
Yeah, it just seems to be like a problem waiting, a lawsuit or an accident waiting to happen, if not a person picking it up, heaven forbid, a storm comes along and they get blown somewhere. I, I do need to touch on another public safety issue that actually deals with the city government, and that would be the city take-home vehicles. And so I filed a public records request and tried to figure out who, who in the city gets a take-home vehicle, and so, by my count, there are twenty-three individuals currently in take-home vehicles, is that correct?
Mr. Volker?
I've provided this information, it's Cradaville's request, once before, maybe twice before, I don't have the document on me.
Why is the question about that, Mr. Cradaville, why are you concerned?
Well, I have several concerns, so they were two lists, I was given, one is the new list, it no longer has Mr. Marash on it, no longer has Mr. Rawls on it, no longer has Mr. Mahoney on it. Just for the record, Mr. Mahoney is accused of dealing large amounts of cocaine out of his city vehicle, or at least transporting it using his city vehicle. That's a public safety concern. I, I think that there have been many, many accidents, or crashes involving city vehicles as well, and I have some I'd like to ask about. First, I wanna ask about what rules are used to determine who gets their own take-home vehicle, that they get to, you know, use...
Mr. Volker, is it the product of the study, or is it...
Generally, offered to department heads who may have to respond to incidents in off-hours, in the case of Mr. Mahoney and Mr. Marash, those are gentlemen, they were not department heads, but they did have to respond to situations in off-hours, so they were offered that benefit.
So it's based on the department heads and the need of...
Not entirely all department heads, Mr. Hamilton's a department head, he doesn't have a vehicle, but it's also a function of your position, and whether you are needed to respond to situations in off-hours.
And so to be clear, there's ten departments, right, in the city?
There are ten departments.
And, did I just hear that Mr. Marash was not a department head, is he not the head of one of those ten departments?
He was the head of a utility, but, yes, I stand corrected, we did treat him internally as a department head, he was the head of utility.
Okay.
We have a sewer utility, but we don't have a sewer department head, but, yeah, we do have ten department heads.
Okay, and so I think I know the, I mean, we, well, I guess we have Mayor Cato, who's the new water director, and he's...
Engineering.
Inter水water director, and who is the head of, engineering is a department? Who is the head of the engineering department?
The Public Works Director.
So he's actually leading two departments, he's the department head for engineering and for the Department of Public Works.
Correct.
Okay.
Traded him as one department.
And why is that, how long has that been going on?
As long as I can remember. What is the question?
I think by law, we're only entitled to declare ten departments, of our form of government.
Mr. Cradaville, you tell me, so what is your, I just wanna ask you a question, that's the question I have, you discussed with it.
I'll be happy to come back, I'm gonna continue going through the, the city's vehicles, so there are four of the vehicles that were identified as on-call vehicles, which makes sense, people to fix traffic lights, sewer, and two for animal control, and so I guess those folks get a take-home vehicle because they're, it says on-call. There's four people, including the police director, who are listed under public safety, and then there's, I have only three department heads on my list, besides Director Caputo, who have take-home vehicles, is that correct?
I haven't seen it, so you were provided with that information, so you should have it, you have more than we do, we don't have that information, Mr. Volker provided that information to you, so that's what I'm asking you, what is your question, do you have any specific question, we got, we got into that, to what Mr. Volker already have provided you that information, because you know these answers, we don't, we don't have that yet, so what is the question?
Well, I think these are things we should know, and we should talk about it.
So what is the question, Mr. Cradaville?
Well, what I'm getting to is, is I'm trying to determine, who, what decides who gets a take-home vehicle and who doesn't?
We just answered you.
Okay, well, so, so there's three department heads, besides Director Caputo, who have a take-home vehicle, right? Mr. Loughlin, Mr. Zarecki, and Mr. Blevins. That's correct, right?
I have to review the documents, and I'll have to comment.
So, so to be clear, the business administrator does not know which department heads have a take-home vehicle, or which do not?
That's, that's to this, you already, again, you have that information, Mr. Cradaville, I don't know why, I, I know in the way you usually, are you looking for an answer on something? So what is that, you, we don't have that information, Lockley gave you that information, and you're trying to now to test him on the information that he gave you already, so what is the question? He doesn't, you know, he gave you the information, he doesn't have it, maybe they'll get it for you at a later time, so what is the question?
My question is, of those three, Mr. Loughlin, Mr. Zarecki, and Mr. Blevins, are any of them related by blood or by marriage?
Oh, come on, yeah.
Why is that related?
Yes, Mr. Zarecki is my brother-in-law.
Oh.
He married my sister.
Okay, so...
And I, and I chose to give him a car for that purpose.
So why is the, why is the question?
I'm, I'm asking because I also noticed that when you look at the other eleven folks, there's Bill Schrum, Victor Fair, Mike Blackwell, Bill Ortiz, Willie Weaver, Carlos Ortiz, Mike Anderson, Hyrum Santiago, Nicole Fly, Kirk Cook, Victor Ortiz, and Sherry Miller, there's three people with the last name Ortiz, are they related by blood or by marriage?
Well, the city on New Brunswick has like twenty thousand Ortizes.
That's why I gotta ask.
I just wanted to put it out there, I feel so, Mr. Cradaville, you have that information?
I don't have that information.
You don't have that information, if you really need that information, we will get it for you.
I would like to know, and, and I would also like to know, what, of those positions, why do those folks get take-home cars and not others? That's, that's all I'm asking.
We will get you that information.
I, I don't even know what position some of these people are, so I can come back and ask you which one you need to work on.
We will get that information, because we don't have it, so we can be careful to answer your questions on that.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll sit down for now, I'll be back.
Mount Pittman, two thousand one Seaman Street, one hundred and thirty. First, I have a major concern on Seaman Street. Ultimately, people are coming at traffic time, in lunch hour, they're coming, I guess, from, I had, coming off of Handy Street from French direction, they'll make a left on railroad, and they go right on Seaman Street, then they zing on, straight down, and I think we need speed bumps there.
On Seaman?
Yeah, need speed bumps, I mean, they're doing like forty, fifty miles an hour, just racing down, I guess because they're figuring they're cheating, they don't understand the traffic on Handy Street, they can get to Joyce Comer quicker, you know, the kids out there playing, and things of that nature.
Absolutely, just so, Mr. Volker, the process that I, for some of the areas I've asked you for that, and I believe that the process is that you have to talk to the neighbors, the people that live on that street?
Talk to them already.
And they have to sign like a petition, ask you for it, and they're doing that petition, and they're bringing forth to Mr. Theresa to you, and Mr. Theresa will make sure that it goes to the, to the process to do that, because I, I know that people have done it, and it has gone through, so that's, that's the process that they, I would recommend for them to start, if you're willing to, Mr. Theresa will help you out with any of the information that you might need.
All right, yeah, they, you know, they probably have told me before, and I do that.
No, and I seen that, because they're trying to cut the traffic from Handy Street.
Also, National Night Out, I, you know, I, that was nice, they say, we had a actual night out on Seaman Street also, and we can see any of you guys.
I was working, I was at the teen center, so I don't know if I was working with my kids.
That's your excuse.
Exactly, that's my excuse, so...
They said, I...
Mr. Fleming was out.
I wasn't driving.
Oh, because I knew you were out, I know, basically, I know she was out too.
That was the website, and they said, you know, National Night Out, success, great project, we had our location, and I'm like, well, we were the tenth one, you weren't mentioned. Wow, you know.
Did you tell them?
Did they notice, they know that they scheduled it, did they know that you were having that celebration?
Yes, I spoke to Mr. Hudson, I spoke to Courtney, Harry Hudson.
Jennifer, do you have any information on that, that they missed the, the Seaman Street celebration that they were having?
I don't, we had night stops on the agenda last night, and we wanted night stops.
So, I'm gonna ask you, was that even on that?
Well, I'll tell you what, Mr. Hudson's excuse was, I spoke to him a week prior, and ultimately, this wasn't my idea to do National Night Out. I had a meeting with a person from Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office, and we were just going over things, concerns about the city, and things of that nature, and he said, "Remember, you know, it's a great idea to hold a National Night Out." I said, "Well, I've never did that before," and he said, "Well, you know, contact your council, they'll be more than happy to assist you wherever you want." I said, "Man, it's kind of short notice." He said, "No, they can make it happen in a day," you know, so I said, "Wow, okay." I called that Friday, I called a week and a half ago, which was a Friday, Mr. Hudson was obviously on vacation, so I spoke to young lady Brianna, I think it is, and she said, you know, "He'll be back Monday, you know, he'll give you a call." Ultimately, I ended up speaking same Monday, you know, and I said, "Well, you know, we're gonna do a night out also, we would love for you, you guys to come." And he said, "Well, you know, we got a lot of stops to make, and we don't have time to make it on Seaman, Seaman Street." I'm like, "Wow, well, you know," I said, "It would be nice for, you know, the kids to see, you know, the police officers," because it is, you know, community police type of field, you know, residents, you know, where, you know, we just had a young man got killed right on the front porch of Seaman Street, so, you know, and only time the children on Seaman Street get to see police officers, honestly enough, morning porch all the time. You got anti-crime unit right by in the van, right, hats to the back, two on the front, two on the back, and they're, one of those individuals are from New Brunswick, and they stare at community members, and they look back and forth like monsters. So the only time that that community get to see police is in a form of intimidation. They don't get the, and, and on occasion, they'll come through and talk me also, but they don't never get the, "Hey, son, how you doing? Hey, I'm Officer so-and-so, I'm here to keep you safe." So we had an opportunity to create that, and you know, Mr. Hudson said, not only that he said, "We don't have time to make it to your stops, because you got nine other stops," but then he said, I don't even know the guy, but he said, "Tremell, I don't even remember you coming to one, uh, uh, Crime Watch meeting in the library," and I don't even remember that, so he, because I didn't know who I was talking to. So I said, "Okay, all right, that's even better, that I came to one." What does that have to do with the officers coming through a community, and give us, and, and, and I guess making sure the community is secure? Well, ultimately, and fortunately, we continued to have the night out without the assistance of New Brunswick, and it was beautiful. So what the community residents did, being at New Brunswick, you're not gonna assist us, you know, we went, we bought healing balloons, and, you know, we bought a bunch of food, and we cooked down, and I even ran down and got pamphlets from Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office, because I couldn't get no assistance from New Brunswick. So they gave me a bunch of domestic violence pamphlets, and all sorts of things to lay over the table, and we distributed that to the community, but it's sad, it's sad that that street is only subject to intimidation. And that, you know, and you know, the insult was this, at, at the end of the night, around ten, ten-thirty, they actually had a squad car ride by just to stare at you. And the entire day, not one officer got out and shook a, shook a person, it got so, it got so humiliating, right, it got so bad, that a person that was at the night out went around the corner and knocked on the firehouse door. And I, I mean, this is the person said he spoke to Director Rawlins, I don't know, I don't know, but said, "At least send a fire truck through, to let the kids see a fire truck." So one of the firefighters said, "You know what, we'll fill your bone, all right, we'll ride a fire truck through." And they rode a fire truck through and beeped the horn a few times, but that's what they were subject to. National Night Out. Now, you, now, now, let me explain to you something about National Night Out, that they denied a person. My grandmother's been living in that house for sixty years, she's been living in that house, she's been sitting on that porch for sixty years, and to have someone say that they don't have time to ride through and see those community residents, after witnessing a person being murdered on the steps, and two other people being shot in the process, you don't have time. This is what Mr. Hudson told me.
I would, I would talk to Mr. Hudson, and I, it's important that they, that you guys have established stuff there, you know...
And just letting him know also, for future reference, we don't need you to do it. We'll continue to do, because we learn a hard way that we can't do it on our own, we don't, we don't need, we don't need you, sister. We'll continue to find a way to do it on our own, you know, successful, bunch of people out, no animosity, no fights, none of that, so we'll continue to do it on our own.
Thank you, Mr. Volker. Six minutes, I think, you told us so, as you know, we said it's a...
I'm not used to getting claps in here.
Good afternoon, Beverly Marshall, thirty-three, Commercial Avenue. I brought some parents and young people and children here, so please, don't, don't scare them, you know. I told them about, they're coming here, and I would like to have a few meetings, especially the city council, if you can take some time to come to New Brunswick Apartments, you know, and just go through with the children, how the government runs, that would really be helpful. I'm sure that you have read about New Brunswick Apartments and the shootings that we've had down there, and it's really been, it's been really bad, especially with the residents calling the police departments, and it's been a lot of problems with the police department, but in the past week, somehow, they have come to New Brunswick Apartments, and they're there from eleven o'clock at night until six o'clock in the morning, they're walking the beat, and they have a police car outside, so now some of the tenants, the majority of the tenants can sleep easy, but I just hope this continues. Every time that I speak to someone about New Brunswick Apartments, they tell me that, "Well, that's private property." What I don't understand is that, even though it's private property, just about all the property in the city of New Brunswick is private, this building is private, but the complex where I live, it's, it's, it's a tax credit, and plus, they, they have there over seventy-five percent of federal subsidies, so I don't understand how it can be private property, and what the company is doing to the residents there, they're raising rent, they don't wanna hire security, we do not have a superintendent on the property, but it's a tax credit, so if it's a tax credit, someone, please, up here, please explain to me, what, what is the tax credit? Are they there free, because they're already getting money from the residents with, the , their security? They're not receiving any money at the end of the year, which they're supposed to, they're supposed to get at least a few dollars from their security, they're not getting that, and we're also, they're also getting money from PSE and G, okay? So whatever the residents pay, the company is also getting a check from PSE and G for each resident living at thirty-three Commercial Avenue. So money is coming in to the owners, but all we hear is, "This is private property." So please explain to me about the tax credit, and if they're getting a tax credit, where's all of this money going to, are they giving any of this money to the schools? What are they doing? Or is, is, we're paying for them in the tax credit, and they're sitting up on Rich Hill, and the residents, we're suffering? So could you explain to me about the tax credit, what it is, where is the money going?
I just, I'm asking if you could help us with that tax credit, I have to work, but before we start, I just wanna tell you, it's, it's Marshall, there is, even if it's subsidized by tax credits or anything else, the, the tenants have rights, and, and I would recommend, maybe you have a tenant association that could organize that, or bring somebody to give a worship on what I said rights, because even if it's subsidized property... because even if it's subsidized property, everybody there has rights, and they should be living in, 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 in conditions that are safe for everybody.
I, I, I am the president, I am the president of the Tenant Association, we also have the vice president and the secretary. And we do get the residents together, we know about our rights. I make sure that they know their legal rights, but what I want to find out about the tax credit, how are we putting money in a property, and they're giving money, but we're not getting anything out of it? And then when we come to the city, oh, this is private property.
I just, I just want to, if you know, so I just wanted to add that, but Mr. Pratt, if you could explain a little bit about tax credits and it's...
I'm not aware of any city subsidies going to this project. I assume, Mr. Marshall, referring to our low-income housing tax credits, which is a federal program to provide affordable housing. I know that project was refinanced about ten, twelve years ago. That may have been part of the financing package, which came through either the state's HMFA or through HUD. I would suggest that, Mr. Marshall, you might want to check with the HUD Northfield office, and they might be able to give you information as to what the financing is there. But that did not come through.
Okay, so could I also get information from the municipal clerk? Because all the paperwork from New Brunswick Apartments, aren't they filed with the municipal clerk?
I don't know, what, what kind of information?
Yeah, I guess the paper was the tax papers or whatever, uh...
I'm not, I'm not sure what exactly what you're referring, if you're referring to their tax bill.
Right, the tax credit, exactly.
You go to the tax assessor and ask them what they're, what they're paying.
I'm sorry, I noticed that something, uh, Ms. Marshall, we saw each other last evening, and in our company, uh, for several of our stops, was Congressman Malone. And I believe a couple of, of, of the tenants interacted with him, and, uh, so I would take that opportunity, if I were you, to contact his office and his constituent services to help you out with these federal programs, because I'm sure they're used to dealing with those agencies, and can help give you information and contact names and the like. So, I would encourage you, since he was there last night and was asking lots of questions and meeting the people, um, as you want, uh, your member of Congress to do.
No, but see, but this is what I want to know. If, if a company is here, a corporation, the same company that owned New Brunswick Apartments thirty years ago are the same ones that own it now, what they have done, they have switched managing companies. So, it's like passing the buck, but I want to know that if the company is here, and if money is going out, and I know money is coming in from New Brunswick Apartments, what I want to know is, why is it that every time that we come here, the only thing I get is that this is private property? That's, that's my answer, because we're here, and we have traffic from Nielsen Street, no one ever come down in our area. We need bumpers, we need stop signs, we need speed signs, we're just like in a country of our own. We're right on Nielsen Street, Tabernacle Way, Route Eighteen, Commercial Avenue. You have boxed us in, we're like in a cage, traffic coming from all ends. You have traffic coming from Commercial Avenue, down the bridge, you have traffic coming from around Route Eighteen, and they're merging together, and there's nothing there stopping the traffic, there's nothing there stopping cars from hitting the children. You have Nielsen Street, which, that's like Route Eighteen, and I have spoken about this before. You have Tabernacle Way, when they come off of Route Eighteen, on Tabernacle Way, children are out there playing, they're speeding up the street, and it's just like, who do we go to for help? You're talking about one thing, New Brunswick Apartments, but what about Commercial Avenue, Nielsen Street, and Tabernacle Way? I have, I have been up on Hamilton Street, Eastern Avenue, Remsen Avenue, every block, every corner. You have a little stand there saying, children, and for the traffic to stop. On Nielsen Street, they put, and the ones up there are brand new. They wrote one sign down from Carmen Street and Nielsen Street, it was a raggedy. So, they must have got that out of the garage somewhere, a car came through and just drug that down the street, so there's nothing there. So, when can we get some help, the same way, Eastern Avenue, Hamilton Street, Remsen Avenue, Somerset Street, all the other streets? When can we get some help, and you can come down and help the residents of Thirty-Three Commercial Avenue?
Thank you.
Good evening, once again, I have a note from Ms. Chabotz or Mr. Hamilton, she had to leave. So, just to pick up where we left off, there's not really much defined rhyme or reason to who gets a city car, who doesn't. Some departments had, some department heads do, some department heads don't, two of the three police captains get them, and a variety of other employees working in various departments. I've been trying to ask, and I'll ask again, you know, what, what is required to get this city car? Is, is there any type of research that's done, for instance, into the driving records of the individuals who are going to be given these cars?
Uh, well, I will tell you, Mr. Pratt, since we don't have that information, I would prefer, you know, we're gonna get that information, and we would be looking out for that.
With all due respect, could you ask Mr. Loughlin if, if they check the driving records before they give a city car to someone?
Mr. Martin, they don't.
Okay, so that's very problematic, that is, uh, seems to me to be a, a mistake that's being made. And I hope that there's no more cars that are given out without a proper check in someone's driving record, I think. That's, that's how we got into this mess in the first place, and so I have to ask about, Robert Rawls, the fire director, had, was, was he ever permitted to drive a fire truck when he was with the department?
I have no idea.
And, and so, if he were to be able to drive a fire truck, would his, would his driving record be looked into at all?
I don't, I don't issue the driving assignments for the fire department, the fire department is trying to do drives.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have access to the driving abstracts of our employees unless they provide the abstract themselves.
Is there potential that that could be something you could start asking for?
Like, like I said, um, Mr. Pratt, we're gonna ask those, you know, vehicles, anything that policies and all that based on, uh, questions. Once we find out, we'll be able to answer better or to say whether something is working or not, because right now, we have no idea. We're just hearing what is here and there, so if we have the whole information, we are able to give you better information and answer you in a better way. So, if you let us, all of us, to understand things, like what is supposed to be here, what is, who gets it, who's getting it, then we will be better at answering these questions.
I, I can be patient, but I do think it's an urgent matter, because public safety is in jeopardy. And, and so I do want to ask, how many tort claim notices has the city received due to accidents involving Robert Rawls, the fire director?
So, how, do you have an idea?
We're getting, Mr. Pratt, the tort claim notices going back to nineteen ninety.
So, he has...
I don't know, I'm not aware of any, but when you get that, that response, you'll certainly be aware whether there were any that involved Mr. Rawls, other than what happened about four weeks ago.
Well, you already gave me two, so there are, there were two so far, plus whatever, perhaps, I guess, three families of the three children who were hit. That would be three more, so that, that could be as many as five notices of tort claim. Tell me, have there ever been any lawsuits about, regarding the crash that the fire director was in?
Mr. Hamilton, uh, do you have that information?
No, we're getting it.
Oh, so we're working on it, because he, he requested that, right? So, we're working on it, so, uh, I have an answer.
Now, I, I understand you're getting me the documents, but I'm, I'm, it just doesn't add up that, that you wouldn't know offhand. At this point, the man's been involved in a crash, do, do you know how many times this has happened before? Do you remember?
Again, uh, Mr. Pratt, I, I hear what you're trying to say, we, we're working on that information, your concern is totally noted, let's, what is your next question?
My next question is, are we gonna pay for the lawyer for Mr. Rawls in his upcoming case? Are the taxpayers going to pay for, for this expensive lawyer?
So, Hamilton, do you have an answer to that?
Uh, it will depend on the outcome, I believe.
The outcome of?
The, here, trial.
So, the lawyer's gonna work for free, and then maybe we'll put, maybe the city will pay or maybe they won't, I mean, this seems, uh...
That's the way the statute treats it.
Okay, that's the way the statute works.
So, the city may be required to pay for his attorney?
You just said that depending on the outcomes, so we have to wait, I saw.
How, how so? Please, I'm sorry, forgive me for, for not understanding, if, if he's found not guilty, then, is it different than if he's found guilty?
I have not, uh, leading the lawyer, Mr. Hamilton.
I cited to Mrs. Chabotz the statute before, and it turns out I was right, my memory's not too good a shot. N J S forty, colon, one fifty-five spells out statutory basis for reimbursing an officer's fee. There's also a P B A contract, I'm not sure what's in the F M B A contract, I would see this in the U D.
Okay, thank you for, for that citation. I, I, I want to ask about some other crashes involving city vehicles. A few days after that May sixth crash, a water utility vehicle crashed into a telephone pole. Can, can somebody tell me what the outcome was of that? Were there tickets issued?
Information about, or, if that means that?
I recall the accident, I don't know if a ticket was issued. You were at the scene, right?
I was at the scene, I was told there would be a, a ticket issued.
I don't know, I don't know if one has been, I'll have to look into that.
Follow up on that, Mr. Pratt, go. Next question?
Okay, uh, and just a follow-up question, if there were tickets issued, I'd like to know whether that case was moved to a different municipality or a different county, like Mr. Rawls' case.
We will get that information for you, we have it.
Okay, on December thirteenth, police car number nine oh seven was involved in a crash, can you tell me who was driving and what was the outcome, what was the circumstances?
If he knows, he might be able to reverse the record election, but other than that, we don't memorize those kind of...
Captain Miller, do you recall that? Okay, so, that's another question that we need, one more second, do you know, Mr. Pratt?
No, I don't, I'm, I'm not, I'm not playing games, it's December thirteenth.
How do you get the date, Mr. Pratt?
I have my sources.
So, does he tell you that there was an accident?
No, it's a doc, it's a document, I, I looked at documents that tell me that car nine oh seven was in an accident.
Okay, so you know the answer, why is it that you need to know about this?
No, I want to know who was driving it, and what were the circumstances, did they hit someone, or did someone hit them?
The document, did he state it, was your...
I'm working with what I got here.
So, Captain Miller, can you, um, maybe you have a document that shows who was the driver of that accident in December?
We got these in public records, actually, he utilizes extensively to get information, and once he can get that information, he can make an offer request.
So, you can make an offer request for that, Mr. Pratt?
I, I've been told through the grapevine that the mayor is telling people that I am inundating the city with offer requests, so I'm trying not to do that. I'm asking person to person here, can you get me the information, and we can avoid, and we can save Mr. Teresi some time?
Let's, yeah, but you technically, I, you are, he's not saying something, you are intending to make this into an offer request, but I will do this. I, I will try to get that information for you, Mr. Pratt, whatever it is, December.
Thank you, um, February fourth, car nine two six was in an accident.
I know, you see, now you have to have an offer request, because you are seeing all of these accidents, so ask for an offer request, because I...
This is a serious public safety issue, there's a lot of accidents involving city vehicles, I want to know which one.
Get, get, um, then do the offer request, Mr. Pratt, because this is more than...
Okay, you might remember this one, February tenth, a pedestrian was hit by a city truck.
Really wants this kind of information besides offering, and he gives you a list ahead of time, and people will be able to...
I just prepared this before the meeting, I'd be happy to, to give you some, some information. But, but I do want to ask, February tenth, a pedestrian was hit by a city truck, does anyone remember what happened there, what were the circumstances?
We don't have that information, but again, either you could do an offer request, or you could give us that, Mr. Hamilton said, the list of all the concerns that you have, and we will get to the answers. It's very hard to remember, I don't, you know, it's unfair to us, when somebody said, okay, how many, when was this happened, the details to it, we don't have it. So, if you would like, we can do that, either you do an offer request, or you give us a list, I will make sure that we will get to that information that you need. Is that fair?
That's fair, I just, I, I think it's telling that people don't know the circumstances surrounding this, and no one can give us great answers on the spot. I, I, I do have some other public safety issues that are not really...
You have, you have less than a minute.
Okay, November twentieth, was there a police shooting, was a person shot and killed by the police?
November twentieth?
Yes.
Of last year?
Yeah. Did it involve Spotswood Police and New Brunswick Police, because I know both, there was a claim filed.
Do you remember what it did in November twentieth of last year?
I would remember if there was a police shooting.
Would you remember, you were here, and it was November twentieth, so there must have been a police shooting that you remember? Then, how, how can you ask us to remember something on a date that you don't remember happening?
The city council has professionals here, experts that work full-time for the city, I don't need to be condescended to. I'm asking for basic information, whether or not there was a police shooting on November twentieth, because I'm seeing documents that indicate as much. Can you confirm it or not?
Uh, we have a confirmation, there was possibly one, you know, we don't have, we don't have that one.
There's a, a claim from the estate of Andrew Murnix for a, a police shooting, and, and that claim has been filed to different texts.
Why is that question, or do you want everybody to, uh, you have half a minute?
Was there a claim filed by a person named Alberto Martinez for a police brutality incident on the twenty-seventh of December?
Uh, we have no information, we can't confirm that.
Okay, um, I've done some research.
One more, Mr. Pratt, would you?
Yep, this will be the last one, I've done some research into DUI, DWI arrests. I know that the city's making a big deal about certain campaigns to get folks for driving drunk and, and arrest them, and, uh, I, I wanted to know, how have the department's numbers been since the change in the jurisdiction arrangement with R U P D? Have New Brunswick policemen doing more DUI arrests, DWI arrests? Because I, based on my preliminary research, the R U P D is doing twenty percent less DUI, DWI arrests than they were before. So, is the city picking up the slack, or have we, uh, you know, are we overall doing less DUI enforcement in New Brunswick than we were prior to December sixth?
We will get that information, we will get that information for you, we will next week. Thank you.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Tremell Pippen, tonight, we'll see this shoot, I'm not gonna try to be a head of all. Um, real, real quick, just out of curiosity, is the law still, we're seeing that pay increase?
I guess we're gonna ask this over view, yes, the, the salary I earn is the salary that the mayor thinks is appropriate for me to earn, and it's also within the salary range that this body has on. So, um, it, I, if it matters to you, I believe I earn every nickel that I bring home.
You earn every, you earn a nickel?
I earn every nickel that I bring home.
Mr. Pippen, Mr. Pippen?
You didn't stop there, no, no.
I'm not stopping you, I was asking you to look at me when you have a question, if you remember, you have to address me? You have to address me, and then I tell you that I have a question to you.
Okay, how do you earn every nickel when you get, you get a pay increase for a position, you step down from that position and still receive that pay increase? Where do you earn it? What do you, what did you earn?
Mr. Martin, if you could answer that question, if you choose to do so.
I, I don't, I don't want to give it to you.
You don't have to, then.
I mean, because I'm not, I'm not a type of... I will say again that I believe I'm addressing...
Of course you will, you're getting the money.
I believe that I, I give more value to this community than I, than I'm paid for, and you know what? I, it's, I'm, I'm, I'm very privileged to be in the position I am, I take it seriously. I live here, I spend my money here, and that's got nothing to do with anything other than the fact that I believe my pay is, is fair, and apparently, the mayor feels the same. And should you feel it's not fair, then convince the mayor or the council to change it.
Thank you.
What do the council think? How do you feel?
I feel like he's a very confident and, and, uh...
I want to give him more.
Professional.
You want him to move to a position that he's not earned?
He here for the city, he doesn't listen, but, anything else, Mr. Pippen?
No, just, and, and I'm gonna ask that question every time, because now, that's, that's beautiful. He can take on another position and get another pay increase, and then the next week, step down and still get that money. And he can say, I earned it. Wow, and you're saying, and you guys, and you're saying, I want to give him more money. Wow, wow, that's insane. You know what, I'm gonna, and I'm gonna ask that question every time, you know, I want to know from start to finish, how much he's actually been stealing from the city? Because you have people come here with concerns, you talk about...
I just have a question.
That's a false accusation, that's out, that's out of order, he's accusing, he's accusing our administrator of stealing.
And I'm waiting...
That's stealing to me, that's my definition.